Alright, time is now six thirty. Call me to order. First order business in minutes. I cannot pick it up at the moment because I wasn't here. We are in court. If you've been another board member, come back back around. Did I have three media visitors public comments? Any members of the public want to comment or anything this evening?
Yes.
Good morning.
I was.
Wow, that's going to be a rough one.
I went to a conference the other day and I just wanted to drop this off. I don't know if you already know about this. It's School Resource Center. It's a free webpage and it has to do with firemen, police.
Oh, great.
And it's free information.
Great, thank you.
Also, the selectmen would like to know if the school board would like to attend a meeting that we're having with Freedom Energy. And what it is, is a company that's going to come in and do like a co-op of energy. So there was a had the municipal building, all the residents, and we wanted to invite the school to do part of the town meeting.
What's the date on?
What was it?
The date, date and time?
They haven't set it up yet.
Okay.
Because I was looking to see what we can get information from you to do one meeting for all of us.
Um, so I think more, yeah, well, there may be additional information. It depends on kind of what they're thinking of doing or whatever. Any information you might have on it? Over and now, yeah, we'll work with David to get something set up.
Okay, because they'll come in and present and answer all the questions that we've been asked. But we just wanted to add one thing.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to attend. Nobody else can.
That'd be interesting.
What was the name of the company again?
Great Medics.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else? Okay. Is there any agenda review, Pat?
Yes, we need to add one since I don't have item under. And we need to add small letter D to the non-public session. And we need to remove four A. Every session will be scheduled.
Can I, Richie, get the connection?
Sorry, no.
It's right there.
Yeah. Paul, do you want to speak first?
Sure. So, at the last meeting that I attended, part of my principal's report touched on some of the uptick in physical acts of aggression between students, you know, some fights, some other issues that obviously were unsavory in nature. One of the trends that we're seeing associated with that kind of behavior is students who are recording these events with their phones. And it's growing to be a concern of ours because I think not only the acts themselves are troubling, but the the optics of recording this, it definitely perpetuates that climate and culture concern that I have. So as a result of that, I did an email to the principals around the state and received some very favorable favorable feedback with regards to how many schools implement a policy in their student handbook regarding to the culpability of a student who's recording something with their phone. So I took some of the language that was sent to me and I kind of blended some of it based on the need that we have and what I felt would be appropriate for the high school age gap versus middle school and came up with some proposed language that I would like to implement in our handbook. And because that does still support it for every spring, any addendums or additions would require your consent to do so. But I feel it's a need that we need to address and something that would be applicable in most of these cases.
I wonder if it has a chance to be issued or should be in draft. Fairly short, one sentence worth, I mean, quite a sentence.
So essentially, it's not guaranteeing students will be facing consequence if their parents have recorded something, but they may be subject to disciplinary sanctions. And it would be commensurate with if they were involved in the act of fighting themselves. If they're posting it to social media, if they're recording it and perpetuating it amongst students, it's really reliving that moment over and over again if we wanted to dissuade them from doing it.
I haven't reviewed that change yet, but I'm curious if it addresses only recording in the classroom, which we already know is against the law, or recording in other places in the building.
It does touch on the fact that any, so any unauthorized recording, meaning they have not gotten the person's consent or if it's in the classroom, if they know of a project that would be okay to do, or if they have not approached an administrator to say, I'm going to be recording an event in the halls. It's totally appropriate. Am I okay to do that? We would give our consent. They would be okay to do so. It's specifically geared around students who are violating our codes of conduct. It may not be a fight, it may be something else, but the act of taking up the phone and recording it would be subject to disciplinary sanctions. Could be subject to sanctions.
And both that and every John, you know, the disciplinary consequences for report.
Let's try to just highlight it.
I need a motion, motion to approve the additional language.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are.
I have concerns about the language because I think we've probably all seen videos where a student has been harmed and that's been helpful to the student's family to prove that this action is occurring or even to go forward to the school or to the police to pursue some sort of action. And so, you know, I think we have to be very careful because I can see both sides of the coin because I've also seen the videos where obviously it looks like somebody's agdonant, no, agdonant action, and basically they are kind of participating, but I think we have to be very, very, very careful about the wording.
I think the current school environment is almost 100% video. Video cameras, actually 100% of the rest of ours, using video recording evidence, so what transpired, I believe we have that covered.
We do, and I would, I could see your concern and to that I would say on a case-by-case basis, administration will work with the students in question to say, we see that you filmed this and we would like to use this in investigating it further. But the understanding is that once we are satisfied with the results, that this would be deleted and not posted on social media. So it would be the perpetuation of it beyond, you know, if it was to assist us in the investigation, that would be great, but we don't want it to exist beyond the act itself and investigating its cause and effect. So we could work with the student in question and not necessarily discipline them so long as they believe in it and it was not going around social media.
Do we have a audio and video retention policy on how we keep those?
We do not audio record anything in the building. Really, video recording. And I think the lifespan of that is two to three weeks and then expires.
The video of anywhere from twenty to thirty days. Depending.
It depends on what's happened. It has to say twenty days.
So my concern is twenty to thirty days and then not give a parent enough time to know something's happening and then come and request or have someone request on their behalf that that video be retained.
But if you're just doing it instead of that.
I hope it doesn't matter.
Students have a recording out there for thirty, forty, sixty, eighty days. I'm not sure.
What I'm suggesting is, well, what I'm saying is that I don't agree with the current wording because there are times when for the safety of a student, that does occur. And there's a difference. And I think that I'm not comfortable with a blanket statement made without really qualifiers.
Can I clarify one thing?
Sure.
I just want to clarify that handbook is already approved, so this policy is in the handbook. The only piece that Paul is adding is that a student may be subject to the same disciplinary consequences to be infracted.
Yes.
So should I understand?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Just the way that I read this, the very first word is "may." I think that the expectation there is that if a video were useful or the administration could use it to help investigate or whatever, that will be done and then deleted. So I think that covers the concern that that can be beneficial to the family. I am certainly not saying that every kid can ever record, that everything is going to be disciplinary.
The line is here, one of the rules is this way students can record the press conference.
Can I think, I agree with that, like it's the purpose of it. But just going to say that someone who makes the video, you know, is basically an accessory is how I'm reading it. Is that the intent?
That's, yeah, I'm kind of going down that road too because it's, again, my, my thought was when there's, since there's no audio recording, video is great, but it doesn't capture everything. So if you do have access to students' recordings, again, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if there's a fight going on, some physical altercation, one of two things should be happening. Either, and I know you don't want it this way, but this is the way I think, students should be trying to stop that interaction or students should be going to administration or teachers to stop this interaction. But the reality is to think, no matter what policy happens place, somebody's going to record this. If they use it appropriately, yeah, disciplinary consequences are there. I, again, the whole can be beneficial and can also be harmful. You also state that unauthorized posting to social media is, can result in punishment also, which absolutely, yes, you're pretty much covered there. I'm just concerned that somebody who's doing this, you know, maybe gets unfairly assisted. It's hard, it's hard to get, I understand. And I don't disagree with it at all, but I think it also, there is a benefit, you know, in certain circumstances to it. That's just a comment, not a. So come out to. I don't even know, right, you know?
Yes, yes. That's, we try to take everything on people who keep being.
Right, yeah, as long as we can ensure that.
It's really to stop the kids from sensationalizing, acting, you know, fights, and we don't want kids doing that. They're being helpful or evidence of wrongdoing then.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're adults now, so we have the advantage of going through childhood and teenagehood. Do we really think adding this line is going to stop in the broad sense students' behavior? I mean.
I think that's a great question. I think right now, because we don't have any language around it, there is no fear of consequence for being a spectator that's having an active role in whatever's going on. I think we're trying to, much like we're trying to instill principles of civility and decency. I think to Gene's point, we would rather have a student try and step in between and keep students from fighting. But to actually take up your phone and film it is, the optics of that sends a message to everyone around them that this is some sort of sport or some sort of event that is, you know, worthy of an audience that should see it. And then then put it out on social media. We're almost getting the sense in some cases, and this is not every case, that some of the students recording it knew about it in advance and were at the right place at the right time with their phones out before this even started and camera footage from the building was discussed, but that's accurate. So we're trying to dissuade them from being a, you know, tertiary participant, for lack of a better term. So instead of engaging as a bystander with your phone out, maybe you're running and get administration, maybe you're trying to pull your friend off with the other student. I don't know what our end result would be, but it has to be better than what we're doing now at this school.
And I'm getting whispers now, years ago, we had something called Fight Clubs. And we're beginning to hear that again, most slow purposes to videotape it. They stage it and can get hurt in the slow purposes to videotape it. The other thing that, you know, I was just going to show my age, but if we were, you know, a number of years ago, and people were walking down the corridor with a big video camera on their shoulder, people would be mortified because it's violation of their own privacy. So we have kids that are walking around with these in bathrooms and locker rooms throughout the whole building, and we don't think anything of it. I mean, this video that is going out on a regular basis is a banana. And so it's just an interesting dilemma that puts a school in. And because I don't allow these devices in the building, they're all over the place. But it's just, you know, that's my perspective also, and it, because I'm looking at language like this also. And I think I agree with Andy as far as it says it, it may, we have a lot of licenses, may, and it gives, I think with administration, some flexibility to look at the situation, one case at a time.
So is the concern more of the passive participants?
Well, I certainly don't want students fighting.
Well, yes, but the reason for the language, additional language.
Yeah.
I would feel more hopeful if it addresses that, you know, due to investigations, if, you know, the videographer is bound to be a passive participant. Then the disciplinary consequences for the infringement may occur. That we were targeting the right audience, not the blanket statement. That's my concern.
And my other, my response to that would be this is not solely the discretion of administration in fights. It's, I would say the, you know, the fact that students are also from time to time taping their teachers. You know, if they're, if they power struggle in the classroom, the first instinct is to take up the phone and, you know, say to the person, I'm recording you right now. There's really nothing that the teacher can do about that or that we can do about that because we have no language with regard to unauthorized videotaping or audio recording.
Except for the state law that, right, they stay out of the law.
Correct.
Yes, exactly. So we don't have to have a policy on that if there's already a state.
However, the teacher would have to, the teacher would have to pursue through least part of any civil charges. He could not, we don't have anything in our handbook that says he will get a consequence for that behavior. So that's kind of why I'm looking at it more as a blanket coverage of unauthorized video. I think just, I'm going to go way back. You said you're old enough to remember this, okay?
I'm older than that.
Right, so you know my kids went through your school, and how many times did I have to come in or Charlotte come and collect a cell phone?
Yep.
Does that still happen today?
It does.
Yeah, that's the question. Does it happen here today? I mean, this, this is like, you know, this is for higher learning. They're here, their mom can text them, you know, dinner's ready when you get home or I'll pick you up at four o'clock after your practice, whatever the case. I mean, they don't need the phone out during the day. And so I'm really to the point of zero tolerance as far as these things because they're walking around all day with them in their face. You know, so if they went away in school, period, that would be a great thing.
And using the classroom.
I, I, who's got Chromebooks? You know, I'm.
I think ship on, I, I.
I understand where you're at, Gene, I do.
I, I think we've, we've lost the battle there already.
Right, and, and you keep giving inches on certain things. And, you know, unfortunately, we've gotten to this point where, talking about language, you know, I, I'm all for this, adding it in here. Just to, you know, but I don't want it to, like I said before, I don't want it just to be a blanket, like you had your phone out, you don't. And it seems by reading it, the insertion of the word "may" kind of leaves that open to interpretation. So I'm good with that, but, you know, if you have parents who I think felt towards that even in the day, I think that would go a long way to addressing the problem. You know, yeah, it should fail, but, you know, it doesn't mean we can't drop anchor and, you know, turn around and head back to shore. Just so.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
Thanks.
Item four, we call it being twenty, twenty-one budgets. Apologize, I haven't been here too much in the budget conversation. My understanding is we need to get some heavy lifting done this evening. Good. We may have done nothing. Oh, we'll go back in a few minutes. Don't do that first. Before we move on to board meeting, we can go back to next previous meeting, November the fifth, twenty nineteen, budget was one. Okay, any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor? Yeah?
That does.
Thank you. So I'm playing a little bit of catch-up, so bear with me. Don't mind. So my understanding is, at once we've groomed this budget as a board, more than the ideas that appear to be larger than ten thousand dollars or something in that effect, traditionally tend what we've done in the past. Questions have been asked, questions have been answered. I'm assuming for the most part, it's where we're at. I've gone through this on my own. I have an understanding of what pretty much everything is. I think, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, we're at the point of having a realistic discussion of how we feel about where this budget is at the moment. We've got to understand there's some things that aren't in this budget yet. We haven't done some increasing salaries in here yet. And early time benefits are in here yet. That's traditionally about a hundred thousand dollars that lie at the bottom line of the budget. So where would we want to start?
May I, what happened to the last meeting?
I would, that would be.
I promised Amber I would do this, but she highlighted in yellow, which in exchange, there were a few changes there throughout the meeting. Not many, there were. Page nine, there was a change in summer placement and then a change in special placement. There was a special education, we talked about before. Things get updated, we will make the change right up until we turn the budget in because the budget's at current fifty ten. And then the, I think the other thing was the health insurance rate came and they were higher than Amber had anticipated. Yes, this is the final. We came in at five point eight, for twenty, five point nine for good.
Change one, please.
And yellow, four point seven. Mentioned it previously, estimated the rate, which is an average, I can see, over the past couple of years.
Happy fourth month left, three?
Seven.
I was twenty-three.
For yellow.
Twenty-three. That's subject to that one over there, page twenty-three.
Yep.
Do you want to go with that update? I also here's other goals that we kind of started to deal with. Few that I kind of highlighted that I looked through this this afternoon. I'd like to go through the whole thing. This may apply to kind of our discussion here tonight. We have a goal to, under social and emotional learning, to administer and review the judgment with risk, maybe study. That may have made a kind of play into, as we're discussing it. Explore ways to gather information on the school culture. At this point, we have not done that. We're going to have to depend on, we need to do this to provide us with an understanding of current school culture, culture and climate. As far as academics, one of our goals is to provide learning environment to that increases achievement in the areas of academic, intellectual, physical and social growth that needs more of us students. And as far as budget, provide a budget, I'm sorry, provide a budget the most transparent way possible to support and sustain student and faculty performance that is responsible and affordable to taxpayers. Want to highlight a few, I'm sure they're all the same here, but they seem to be more important to tonight's discussion. Obviously, there's a lot of special ed here. I think everybody understands that. My take on it is generally appropriate is, it's not going to be a lot of special ed. There's affection very little that we can do about special ed spending. But the only thing we can do to help offset some of that is possibly use the money out of trust funds to help offset some of those costs. But that is not going to change the bottom line percentage increase, which is going to be offset by something. Lot some of you.
Okay, the question about the budget, we have the new numbers and for health insurance. I do recall that when asked on the October twenty second meeting, you were told that it's been two to three years since the last time the health insurance has been evaluated. When are we going to ask that be reevaluated? Is there a reading time that is reevaluated?
Yes, please.
It's underway right now.
Okay, thank you.
We also have to remind you, we also have to review all the questions our meeting brings to the district to see what language they have, to make sure you know, file anything, but the claims are already being organized and they are working on it.
Okay.
Sure.
Are we fully, do we have fully funded or self-funded there for health insurance?
I don't know the difference. Can you explain that?
Sure, fully funded is where the insurance company pays for claims, self-funded is where the employer.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, it's the company.
Okay, yeah, we'll be, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know the difference.
Good.
I'm sure, I'm curious, has it ever been explored if there's any advantage to be self-funded instead of fully funded as far as what we're paying out, claims that are coming in, like we may can get that data from the insurance company just to do that evaluation, to see if that might be worth it to help. Don't worry.
Don't know that it will be, but maybe we'll see in the last one.
Okay, thank you.
Good, a couple. So one thing just to wrap my head around is the big picture here. There's a couple of things you mentioned earlier. I kind of wondered about that from other times. I think this might not be in here. Is that something we can ballpark so we have a better idea of what this final number is? Obviously, things change and we have uncertainty as far as retirement, people like that, but.
Do you still have a discussion non-public about one of the reasons not to go down non-public? About it done later in the evening? I guess it's a better idea. Early retirement number is until we get, until we know we can retire, what piece of that, that plan you're going to take longer than that number. But traditionally, it's been about a hundred thousand dollars.
I guess I, I'm not making, I don't want to call this a recommendation at this point until we have some of those discussions and see where we are at the bottom line. But I may have mentioned it in the last meeting. I have a strong feeling towards adding a position at the elementary school. We are currently, currently have a similar employee who's acting as both a library specialist and a technology integrator. I think in two thousand nineteen and going forward, hold the load or handle positions that deserve a full-time staff number. I know personally, library specialist, teaching like information literacy, teaching kids what are reliable and unreliable sources of the internet. Those are invaluable skills in this day and age. And I think it's also invaluable for true technology integrators to push into the classrooms whenever necessary and whenever reasonable. So that's my little pitch that, again, depending on what the bottom line looks like, I will hope that we would look strongly at adding positions.
I'm going to give you a little bit more, a little bit of leeway here. Couple of, at least one historical comments. It's obviously going to be a contract year. There will likely be a teacher contract on the warrant article this year. They never come for free. There will be a price tag associated with that. Traditionally, what has happened in years past is, one of, one of two things is going to get approved. You know, a large budget increase. to get approved, you know, a large budget increase to the overall operating budget for the teacher contracts. Historically, not, no. We don't have that. Doesn't mean it can't happen, it wouldn't happen this year, but just historically, that's been the situation. We have discussed earlier in the year, probably late last year, about providing mental health support. At a minimum, having an academy, that, moving in here, it means it's a better.
It's part of the budget proposal, but we're not adding a position, a current staff. Was that one of the ones that you made, that you put as sort of the background for?
Okay. We have several.
Yeah.
No, it's a position.
Position, correct. Correct.
Not personnel, but position itself.
Well, that's interesting. Okay, so that, how many, do you elaborate on that at all?
So, looking in the mold of an additional intervention, prevention counselor slash school counselor can provide, you know, push services in the classroom, but also in the community for families and students who are experiencing some of the trauma that we're seeing coming into the building on a regular basis as a result of youth risk behavior survey, the results of the 2019 survey, which we'll link this winter and get the date, look at what some of that dating deals. But we are seeing this with prevalence in the first three months of the school year, the need for additional, not just intervention, but preventative counseling for our students, not in just substance abuse, but mental health and the ability to process and deal with some of the trauma that they are experiencing in their personal lives and their, you know, academic world as well.
How many positions is this one?
Just the one.
One?
One additional, kind of school health.
So, now we had talked about a while ago, whether or not one would come out, whether one was really just going to be equal, well, I know that John just talked about it as well. If, I understand we've got somewhere, one is going to be sufficient, or two can make more sense at this point, so we'll actually get off the ground what it is for $100,000.
Are you talking purely in the high school or district, what?
I could, I could have this argument either way, Paul.
Right now, in this budget, there's an additional staff member for three reasons, that would be an EH specialist, that would work with our EH folks.
So, you have one as well?
One is currently in this budget.
I see it's one.
It's not a counselor, one of these one, they're clear, it's not a counselor, it's more of a case manager with the EH, which work with, especially in working on a human program.
That being the extent?
We don't have that currently, that's the.
Or you would have to bring that, you would have to.
Is that, that one away like two years or?
But that's going to come, we haven't had that.
Which one's second?
We haven't had that in two years.
That's one.
So, that is in this current budget. That would be, I, I see that as a much higher need right now than a counselor, counselor, or a, we would play that. But that is a real, real current need right now. It's the same as that, with one is a different.
Is one person, I'm not going to make a difference at the high school that we didn't need to. I know you'd love that too, probably three, that too, Paul.
I'm embarrassed, but I, I, I would take what we could get at this point, which one would be a substantive increase in the effect in our building, a positive effect on students receiving services and getting the help.
I can see something different.
Tangible outcomes.
All right.
Just for clarification, instead of I now and publicly announce, what is EH, what's that then?
Emotionally, what is called, what is called?
EDD, emotionally, ED, you know, it's a, it's a special education program, so it's not serving the general population necessarily.
And does that mean someone will need an IP in order to access the professional?
I guess that could be determined, but that's what the program would be for, so if, if there are students in there that needed assistance, only we need to obtain other students.
Thank you.
The other thing is, in this budget, man, if you remember, we reduced a fifth grade teacher last year, and that class is currently about seventy-two, seventy-three, and to, honestly, we really started to ban some of this stuff, the class size is a huge factor, it's a huge factor. So, they are now like eighteen or nineteen. I have not changed that, but I have also not discussed next year, which is sixth grade going down the floor, that class size would drop.
Or you've got a monstrous increase down in your, in your house. So, that, that's eventually going to fall.
Correct, but I would tend to add like this, a fifth grade teacher back, because we're right on that, we're sitting right there, eighteen or nineteen in this one of the class. And if we did, it doesn't take much to tip that scale, and we're, we're sitting right there. So, right now, there's not enough fifth grade teachers, but there's not because of sixth grade.
Yeah.
It not means class size is going to drop to sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
And this is, I'm sure there's no actual concrete answer to this, but I'd be interested in altering the business. Going off what you just said, if you, if you could add either a special ed staff or an additional teacher to a grade level to bring those class size numbers down, which one of those do you think has a more tangible, immediate effect?
Can I say, it could be mine, I know you asked for your opinion, but I can tell you that there, there are legal ramifications, we led law, half the lawyers are special ed staff. And I think, we'd love to add other staff, but it's not, it can't be an opinion or what you think would have the better.
Well, that's true, at some extent, but the position you're hiring, that's not necessarily legally obligated to be a position, is it?
John, yes.
Yes.
Oh, we need that, we need that.
Well, and I wasn't specifically, that's standard, but if you, if you had to add one more on top of that thing, so if our legal expectations were met, we're going to add one, I'm not suggesting we do it, just curious what, what the impact would be.
Class of twenty is not what it is. I can tell you that, it is not the same anymore, as much as we all want to believe it is, it simply is not. So, when I go around the building and you see a class that is in that fifteen or sixteen range, in a given environment, at any point, it's significantly different to the answer. So, the way I look at it, we can, we can try to address class I, or we can keep adding special ed. Something has to happen.
So, your addition, John, is not really going to suggest school Y. This one position would, yes.
Case manager would be for school Y.
Special ed.
Special ed, special ed, oh, yeah. But it would not take care of the school Y population.
That targeted area, what we're trying to target is where it would be, it would be in that area. We already have, uh, cases for others.
Others. So.
Want me to add a question, but you'll think about this.
Okay, so anyway, I got to back up, I get a second here. So, we don't have this EH case manager right now.
Correct.
But we're legally obligated to have it.
We have students with significant needs that are coming up to the school and are looking like, looking like they need a program, we're rather than they are.
All right, so.
We're managing right now, but we need, need the students.
Okay. So, you're like in a gray area, really, it's like.
Right now, we are, we are pulling from other resources to meet students.
Okay, basically, I, I got a little confused in there, like, we don't have it, but it's legally obligated to have it for years.
We're needing the need, but we are, we are, we're, we're doing that for a moment, but they're back.
And I think, just to go off of who you were asking, this only targets a specific part of the school population, but by targeting the specific school population, it'll be kind of a trickle-down effect to everybody else by addressing these, these behavior issues. It won't be the pressure on the kids, on the students that don't, that are maybe not in this program, will be less than, like, in, I get that. It'll lessen the pressure on the teachers in the classroom right now, to be able to better address the students that don't have the behavior.
Here's another option.
Okay.
And the ultimate goal again is to, you know, support those students so that the teachers can continue to teach.
All right, so that would be what, to a removal and put into?
It would be, it's case-specific. It's typically push-in with behavior plans and with the supports. I don't know, but it really is specific to each child, to each child we agree, and that's part of the problem.
Yeah.
We have so many that you need somebody to support that. But it would be really specific to each child and what the need is for each child.
But the benefit would be to the overall population.
That's correct.
Derek, finally got to that one.
I knew you were getting what you were talking about. Let's get there in a round, Derek.
I'm just curious, potentially, what would be the value instead of adding another position? Or also, in addition to adding another position, if the tools aren't there, or the resources to help our kids to maybe bring in someone who knows about universal design for learning, or an inclusion education specialist, who may have, you know, just come in with new eyes and see things that current staff hasn't, you know, you don't see the cobwebs in your own house, sort of, sort of, kind of thing, to have somebody come in with fresh eyes on a consult basis.
We do that on a pretty regular basis.
We have a ECD that's helping us, that's doing the amazing job, educating and giving professional development, not just to the teachers who are directly working with the students, but the specialists, all our identified arts teachers, other teachers, when we go through behavior RTI, she's getting an opportunity to speak into behavior plans, and I think, you're right, like, fresh eyes, like, just a tweet, a different way of saying it, a different speech to be occupied, you know, all those things, they do help. But we are doing that, I want you to know, we do have that.
But the universal design for learning and inclusion specialist is helpful for all students, not just special ed population? So, when you're talking about an ECD, that person is here to support a person with ninety, who's been identified as a person.
So, I draw a challenge that, from the three of our curriculums that we're really focused on, which is our social, emotional, response classroom, our math program, and our literacy program, all have that inclusion built in. We did a professional development last year for the administrators, but when you do your curriculum well, it is social, emotional, it is inclusive. You want your low student, your high student, being able to be at the table at the same time, so that they learn from each other. I would challenge that, we're, that through, I was in university three years ago with Carolyn Worcester, through response classroom, we're identifying that, we actually are linked to that.
My concern as a board member would be, we keep hearing about the behaviors, and if the tools we have now aren't working, maybe it's time for us to discuss how we help our staff and our students.
My understanding, and you folks can correct me if I'm wrong, is we've had a massive influx of behavior population in the past year. I don't think it was the fact that we even have an handle on it, I think we've just become a little bit wrong.
Well, and, and top of it, we've spoken of the support, we're, we're experiencing the cuts that we've had. But what I am asking is, it's not even getting us back to the level of our school personnel two years ago, two years ago. So, we will still be two, we added one position, we're two or three short of what we've had in the past, and that doesn't even touch paraprofessional support.
We, we have been massive cuts, paraprofessional, which comes to mind, especially, but special ed services and general ed population decline. We've made some major cuts in the last, I'm going to take, did I bet on the board? You know, eight, nine years, we've been making nothing but cuts. We haven't added a body, per se, we haven't asked for an additional body in this district in eight, nine years. We've, you know, cobbled it together like Paul's going to do, I'm going to take a math science, social studies teacher, and I'm going to make him into a social worker, or whatever it is. We haven't asked the town of Pembroke for an additional employee in eight or nine years, I'd be, I'd be more than that.
So, there's an influx, right? Like, we've had cuts, but now we have a population, and I would argue within what last year, that's pretty heavy. So, it's, it's even more disproportionate because of that.
And we're seeing that in this budget. I mean, I didn't do the math, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of special ed money here. I don't know how much of that translates into actual bodies on the ground, I bet you it's probably not a lot. I mean, some pairs, some pairs in here, four or five pairs in here, which is not specifically compared to what we've cut.
I would encourage you to look at the lines, could you line and tell you what, where's the money's going? But you also have to remember, it's not one or two students we're talking, and it's not all, and I said before, it's not all specialized seats that we see behavior like. So, I'm talking with, I've been going around each team and discussing behaviors and what to do, like, support you need, and the overall comment is that, everything seems upside down. We have to teach students how to behave before we can teach the regal. And it's not special ed or anything else, it's just, we now have to teach them how not to be rude. And when we ask them to be, please be quiet, so they will be quiet instead of saying you can't make it. So, and we, there's like four or five of them in the class. So, we're upside down, we have to invite them in the other way around, so that we can actually teach that, and not how to be respectful in the classroom.
And if we only have one body in the classroom and no support, that's going to be difficult. I, I don't know where the money comes from, either you provide it. I, I feel their pain, I understand where they're actually trained in, for many years. And we've been cutting, and now they're, they're feeling the pain, and the population is great.
And I think also why you don't see some of us in the current budget is exactly that, we can't, haven't been able to ask new staff, so we, we don't, we're a little gun shy, we know we're not, because it's not going to annoy them.
All right, and just personally, I would say firsthand, because I, I work with a lot of kids, both at Hill and PRS, through football, whatever, I have group kids that tell me that they are frustrated, because there are so many behaviors, that the kids that are being taught at home to be polite are frustrated because there's so many that aren't, and they say, I want to learn, and I can't learn. It's bad.
I hate to be the one to segue from this conversation, but I just wanted to bring up, I don't want to cut you off, but another budget item.
Sure.
Okay, so at the AREA, ARBA meeting, one thing that came up is, the district were wanting a revenue source for when we refund the tuition, and it was said that we currently don't expense it out, so Pembroke would need to have an expense line, so that the other districts can show that refund coming back. The way that currently works is a reduction in the tuition for the following year, and I definitely think, with our goal in transparency, if we could show that refund going back to the district, that way we can do transparency.
Agree upon that. What we call, we agree upon, county practice.
Right, Amber's point was, if you wanted to do it the other way, that people are suggesting you can be hot traffic for that one, you don't have the capability right now to.
And most importantly, I think it's important that you all know that was part of the conversation at the AREA meeting, and that's why I'm bringing that up.
I'm not sure that's going to be able to be accomplished this year, but definitely I think it needs to come up early, if that's what districts, that you whole want to do, just to make it pretty early, so Amber can get a handle on it and understand how, how to get that.
Okay, and for the people who were seen in, from the other districts, that seemed like they were kind of pro that method, because they want to show that refund coming back in, I can certainly reach out to them, but like, how early, can we add an expense line? Because what, we would just have to add a dollar?
It's up to the end of the next budget year.
You can do it, and the board wants to do it. I can have that.
I mean, do we want to increase transparency and showing when that money's going out of our district?
What if I can just have a part of my budget?
Yeah.
I think if you let, well, I don't, that's maybe.
This may get more complicated, I guess it's my only point. We may want to talk with Amber and figure out, from a revenue, it shouldn't really affect our expenses, but from the revenue side, how that's going to affect the revenue size for every, a year defined.
Or it could potentially increase the revenue if we have.
What you're talking, you're, yeah, you're talking to your back.
Exactly, and you're increasing your bottom line because you're spending something out of the state or the foundation side.
Right, so we have the budget for something that we wouldn't necessarily. Right, so we have to budget for something that we wouldn't necessarily, you know, so.
So I wasn't specifically asked to bring it as an ask, but it was part of the conversation and Amber did say that Pembroke would have to decide to add an expense line.
I think we need to have a better understanding of how that would work. That could be a kind of, yeah.
But there's no reason we can't discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask the, I'll ask the million dollar question. How are people feeling about where this thing currently is at? It's currently at three percent, uh, increased at seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year, um, but the dollars at the tax rate more than honestly. I, I'm just looking for some feedback as to what people could, if we're gonna get a budget lined up, we're gonna need maybe provide some, some directions, what we might say, you know, other teachers, programs, things you wanna come into this and say, hey, listen, we're just gonna bring it in and, you know, at least, you know, fight the battle and, or, or at least not comfortable with three percent, especially with other things coming in and you need to.
Thoughts, just a very general thought, um, I'm certainly not a budget expert, but as we all know, everything increases in price, and to me, two and a half to three percent is on par with inflation and, and for that reason, I see it basically as a flat budget. I believe, and this is not, I'd have to look back to the year, but I believe that the operating budget for the pound is gonna be up like four point three percent. It, those are not huge numbers, price of gas goes up, price of health insurance goes up, everything goes up. I think that two or three percent is to be expected. I think once you start wanting to be on that, then you gotta start asking tough questions to everybody. A three percent increase, in my mind, it's not, it's not, some people just try to sleep over.
Do we even have to put that up for a question? We don't much each. We've done all that.
Yeah, and we would talk about non-public, but you can kind of get an idea.
I get what's kind of what I'm looking for.
Is the budget by the increase from last year? See those lines went down, once we moved the money up, it's a bit of a pull. And you look at, are they?
I'm trying to get a sense of how much additional money out there would be potentially looking at from raises and early retirement.
I think those are two big pieces that are still hanging out here that we haven't realized, we're just trying to get a sense of what we've done this month. I would work with.
So, um, there's a line that shows the separation benefit last year, so it goes down by building, something thousand dollars for retirement, and then if you look below that, there's non-certified increases and administrative increases, and you can add those all up. I don't know if I have one, I have four right here.
Which line? If you want it.
Yes. Fifteen forty-eight is where the separation benefit starts.
Okay, yeah.
And then it's by full, and if you look over, you can see nineteen twenty was nine thousand, hundred seventy thousand.
So we're looking at ninety, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Eighteen, nine thousand, sorry, we're gonna have a thousand dollars in here.
I think it'll be two percent full prior to the break. But that won't be higher this year, I think.
I, I'm not gonna say that we're gonna do what we did last year, I'm not gonna, but between increases and early retirement, probably we'll get another twenty, twenty, twenty fifty dollars. Reasonable general estimate.
Sure.
Okay. So that's the move this budget to close, close to the five percent increase. And the home is back in that in, but just, uh, general estimate, we're looking at about five percent increase after, after wage increases and early retirement.
Yeah, you're working back up to the million dollars, right, that we cut.
We'll be, right, we'll be working at a million dollar increase.
And I think the issue has been people wanting to balance the budget on the back of our program. So if we have four hundred thousand dollars in health insurance, well, we say, whoever doesn't want the budget to go up that much, so find it someplace else, so we can't continue every year to cover those increases, like hundreds of thousands of special ed, hundreds of thousands of health insurance, by, it's like there's no place left in our thinking, that's just our recommendation from administration, there's no place else to go because you talked about conditions, and we get to that level of people out cut.
Um, people's thoughts, I mean, five percent million dollars, pretty much where this thing is sitting right at the moment. This is your opportunity.
I see a battle, um, especially the, there'll be another, an additional warrant article. It's not a resolution.
Well, Amber is right, we're, we're not taking, usually in this budget, we're looking at, we've already got teacher salary increases, and this one does not.
There's not.
So there, in this budget, there are no salary increases for teachers, certified.
So you're looking at another, close to the three percent on top of that.
It depends, depends on what they're.
Yeah, there's variables.
But yeah, there's, uh, there's gonna be an increase, if, if both of those goes through, there's gonna be an increase on top of this.
I would just like to say, if someone would like to come with a recommendation, a line we should look at, why not engage in a conversation with that, maybe not with that person, but at the board? And at least, you know, if we're transparent, we have a conversation, is that something that we can really cut or not?
Well, this, we, this will be up for public, here, this will go to public here.
Right, but we're going to the budget committee before then, so it'll be an opportunity for lots of conversations.
Yep, this will definitely go to budget committee, scrutinize budget committee, we scrutinize the public hearing, then if we get another opportunity, that's, I mean. Um, you know, I think it's our job to gain some level of comfort here before we pack this thing on, you know, is it? I don't even know if we need to, I don't know if we need to have a conversation with whether or not we can do this passable. I think the conversation we had, is it reasonable? Do we believe this provides the level of services that we, I've said that we're going to provide to our, to our students and our faculty and our staff? Is, is this for a reasonable budget?
I, I believe it's reasonable, but reality sets in, and that's when things become kind of murky. And if we live, if schools are funded in a different way, I don't think they're an issue. But, because recently, you're looking at three percent here, maybe five percent, um, but the reality is, the climate today, tax climate today, that affects all of this, so we can say, yes, it's reasonable, but what are we gonna, what are the schools gonna get if the taxpayers result against them? That's my, that's my biggest concern, and, you know, we, we owe it, you know, our kids went through the schools, your kids are in the schools, so somebody else put in the bill for us, and now we're getting to a point where that weight on the taxpayer is getting substantial. Um, especially where you have an aging population, so reasonably, yes, I do not disagree, I do, it, maybe even a little bit low um, for the positions that have been lost over, over time, but unfortunately, I think the reality is gonna stick in the head.
So a couple of pieces there, and I'm gonna, to some extent, cautiously agree with you, Gene, that we've seen people get up on, on the floor and suggest not only reduce it to zero, but cut it at that, um, you know, we can support for that line of thought from the chair of budget committee. So that's been dealt there. Um, with that, I'd say I don't know that that's necessarily our job, our job is to bring forth a budget that provides for our students. We all went through school, a lot of us went to public school, somebody else always had to pay for it. This is the cost of a modern education, these problems have been in existence forever. People, I remember going to school board or the town meetings, my parents dragged me when I was, now this day, and people were screaming over school budgets, um, this isn't new, um, I think that we've got a responsibility to bring forth a budget that provides for our students, um, and if anything, I think this budget's low, uh, for what's needed. Should we increase it? I'm not so sure about that, but I'd love to, but I, I can't run through this thing and, and cut two hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of it. I, I'm not gonna go to these people and ask them to do it, but I personally won't, it's a board candidate's desire.
Um, I was just gonna say, one complaint that I've heard is, um, in general in the community, is the sentiment of how much we're paying for an education and the achievement of our students, because they want, like, like a commodity that you purchase, they want the best education that they can for their child, and sometimes our test scores don't do that. But there's no way as a board that we can reassure somebody that our test scores or our students are going to improve in them, or even that that's tied to a dollar value. So how do you have that, that kind of conversation?
And currently, I mean, traditionally, the guy that opened numbers recently, cost of education Pembroke is almost always below zero. We have to pull those numbers around, like that, they're probably still below zero.
We're very close to it, I, I looked at some of the most used numbers a couple of weeks ago, I'm only just shy, like, by a thousand dollars.
I don't think Pembroke is providing a window of education, you know, we're not providing an education that is top notch and safe. But we're not paying top dollars a day either, I think to some extent, you get what you pay for, we give it an average education, I, I'd say our schools are better than average. I think they provide more bang for their buck than most do. Uh, for what we provide for finances and service and resources to these folks, they do a phenomenal job teaching our students.
Two quick things, one, I, I, just for number sake, um, I added two hundred and twenty-five K onto both the, um, proposed budget number and the difference from last year, and divided that out, and with two twenty-five as a number, that came up to two point seven five percent. Secondly, just to address the question of perception, um, something I've been thinking a lot about lately, and I think that it's easy for us to, it's kind of the whole grassroots dream of being, right, we see, we as a board, we as a community, see the problems in the Pembroke schools. Because we live here, we're in it, um, and I think it's easy to think all these other districts don't have these problems, if you look at the news, some of them have a lot worse problems, um, and I have certainly heard saying similar things in the community, but I have also heard time and time again, from the time I moved here and still to this week, literally, outside of this district, people still wanna move here because of the schools. That's why the real estate does not stay on the market in the state. Test scores are test scores, but people still want to come to Pembroke because they know the Pembroke schools are quality. And so I think it's easy to point out the clause when you're looking them in the face all the time, but that, every school has a clause, and I think the reputation of this school that you look around the state is still a cause to it. And I would agree, if anything, I think this budget is short, I certainly don't wanna present something that has no chance of passing, but the cuts that have been made just in the past four or five years were not near back to those levels, and if we expect to get our children an education that they deserve, um, we can't do that, we're more into that staff, so we're not mad.
From a historical standpoint, when is the last time that a budget did not pass as?
Let's talk separately, we need a, we got cut and we lost, or maybe, help me, we lost.
Sports and music and art and.
That was like seven million dollars in the early nineties.
Now, I don't know that we haven't lost the budgets, but that was a major, that was one of those, someone's gotten up and said, I wanna cut the budget by a quarter million dollars, it was devastating. We may have lost the budget too, but, but it hasn't been catastrophic, that kind of catastrophic.
I mean, all I can share with you, and I'm sure everybody, all of us would agree, we have spent a lot of time in these offices cutting significant amount of money in the last three or four years, but we're talking thousands and thousands, thousands of dollars. So when we say it didn't hit the test, I think if that was presented in a way, it's what we originally proposed and what we needed. So when we presented, it was significant cuts, there was a lot of paper on the floor, um, and I'm not sure everybody realized that. I don't think, you know, that how much we never cut, when we go back, more than ten assists go back, the numbers are too high, we go back and we spend hours and hours, and we, and we're talking five bucks here, ten bucks there, and a lot of stuff. So I think we've cut a lot.
We as a board went back to these folks two years ago, except we watched a quarter million dollars go by. We cut a million dollars two years ago.
This is somewhat off topic, but I'll say it in a regular anyway, um, Gene kind of alluded to it, I think it's good to address, but this is a problem with how the state New Hampshire funds education in general, it sets up a battle between town and school, in every town, it's bad, and I wanna publicly thank the authority, one of our state representatives, who spent all of his time, as far as I can tell, fighting to get education funded in the state, and you gotta vote for people that are gonna help out with this situation.
Any other comments? I haven't heard any one really true concern about the number that's presented here.
I have a question about transportation, if we wanna talk about cuts. If we actually dug to, um, the maximum distance that students, bus walk to the bus, how much savings potentially would we be talking about?
I, yeah, we have contacted a certain number of buses, okay, for a certain number of years, with a five-year contract, that's not year three. Okay, if we couldn't make cuts now, um, and we would have to ask the state to redesign our route, using that new formula.
So is the contract based on the number of stops?
No, the number of buses.
Number of buses, okay, thank you.
To add to that discussion, um, I recall beginning of middle school year, we had some citizens in here that were concerned because some of their bus needs couldn't be met, and if I understand that correctly, it was because we have so few buses that they're basically at capacity, and we have a kid who mom lives on this side of town, dad lives on that side of town, and they wanna switch and ride this bus every other day, there's not a seat for them, so I don't know, I'm not an expert, but I don't know that we can afford to cut any buses and still get the ticket for a week ago.
Yeah, we, we got down to pretty much the bare minimum a handful of years ago, and that was one of the consequences of fellow decision.
And you're still going to have the same number of students, whether they're walking through or not?
Well, I understand we have a contract obligated to provide that transportation, but I didn't know if the number of stops would make a difference in the cost. Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else wants to bring up, discuss? I mean, I could build a little room and find some peasants, but I'm not, it's not a conversation we have yet.
I mean, I can build a little room and find some pens, but I'm not, it's not compensatory without it yet. I think, again, I'm gonna, I think, I'll leave much of what you guys really need. The challenges you're coming to, I think, that's just more than reasonable. Um, I wish we could all take it more, but I think this is one of the biggest challenges that we're gonna, gonna be able to tackle, especially with a likely future contract on the table, we'd say, yeah.
I think, and this is maybe for you to, to, um, I mean, Steve, a conversation that we had last year that I would like to remind everyone of, um, as we're going through this process to try not to make it personal and, you know, to underscore. I hope people understand that we, with all of our years of experience, are trying to bring to you a budget that we feel we need to meet students where they're at. It's not for any personal gain, it's not for any other reason, other than our devotion and it's the duty to spend public education and sisters. So I think if we can stick with that message and not, you know, it's not the administration's fault, it's not the school board's fault, it's not the taxpayers', it's no one's fault. It's just we are each fulfilling our responsibilities, and then the voters make the decision, you know, what they think that they can support. But I, I think keeping it, you know, as a professional role that we're filling and not like with any other role.
So, no one's had any comments for me, to vote to move this forward to budget?
Well, we're not meeting the others, we need a better.
Oh, yeah, well, we're gonna have to.
We'll work, and I'll say we're, we are not on the calendar for budget until very last meeting for Christmas.
They're not expecting a cloud approach in Pembroke analytics, we've had a little bit, we got a little bit.
Usually, but, but during the before break.
I believe so, together, yeah, usually.
And then we always promise that, that things are ready to go ahead of time. Happy to do that. And you did tell me, and you did look at the budget online.
I did, I sent them a link, the link did not work. Um, I will, I, I, when this one, whatever's posted tomorrow, I'll grab an email from them, so they have a Thursday meeting. Um, and I may just type out instructions on where that webpage is. I don't know why, I share points, that's why the link doesn't work, but if I can, I can just tell them, or as you said, three dot or click here, click here, click here, and then they'll be, see it.
You can also email Kathy if you want, and after, email it to you, when she posts it on the webpage, and then she'll forward the email. You can go through that.
We did just do that before, you just, that's your email, okay. I don't know if it's apps, but. Okay, let's move on to that. Policy review, we're not taking any action on policy reviews either. Uh, so we.
We, we have to, we have to.
Well.
What happened? I said, no, why, I actually take this here.
Right, Kathy didn't know. Well, she thought it was a budget session, but she didn't think there would be action taken, but we did talk about a, a promise.
I'm sorry. I didn't know.
I was just going to ask why that is there, and my concern is that taking action tonight, when we have publicly posted this agenda, saying that we will not, what the ramifications would be if we were to take action, we tonight will choose.
So if the, the agenda is not required to be posted, your meeting is required to be posted. So we always post the agenda so that the folks know what we're going to be discussing, but it's at the board's discretion. You can change things, take things off, ask things.
I didn't have a prepared for this, for any action because it was on there.
What needs jail out?
I'm fine, you know, Kathy, we, when we have a board, uh, budget session, we always take policies off. She didn't know, on time, we need two more weeks, so it's like we're both in, coming.
We'll be prepared to, prepared next week to deal with, at least jail out.
Do we, do we need, because we made the motion to do it this time, do we need a motion to not do it this time?
Was the motion to do it?
I believe, I believe we said do it in two weeks regardless of the town. Stumbled through a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, fell down a couple of times, you know. Do we need a motion to amend? I don't know how this works, why?
That's the motion.
A motion.
One guy, you are gone!
Oh, no.
I make a motion that we table action on policy review, although it was our intent to make decisions tonight based on what our agenda is saying that no policy action we take tonight.
Okay. Discussion, all favor?
Fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, you're, you're fine, thank you very much. Okay, generate a six information list.
So I, um, received an email, I don't remember if they're putting it in your drive or not, um, from someone at the state clarifying and apologizing that the error we made about the range, did you see that? Was that in there? Um, yeah, so as the application packet indicated, it was filled out, but it was not reported as historical building. And they indicated their willingness to assist us with that if we would like to do so. Um, I think that was everyone's intention, we were just trying to find out if it already was.
Could the process be as simple as it appeared, or a representative and board is fine?
It sounds like it because it was already approved.
Okay, go forward.
Okay. I can't, I can't guarantee.
I, okay, I just didn't know the impression there.
I, I don't want to get it.
Okay, thank you.
On the topic of range building, if this is a broken time, I did see in the notes that I think it was discussed at the SLEF meeting. I will, will I attend? Did anybody attend or not?
I, I remember.
What's, uh, which meeting?
SLEF meeting last night, or on the gender, I don't know.
It wasn't David's, it was discussed, but there wasn't really a detail.
Um, I agree, just to be able to find out, uh, I'm curious, um, how would gender is left? I, I meant with the SLEF ones, kind of indicating that our intention to move away from that building and, um, divide from the day they're able to acquire that building, um, if they're going.
I think that it was, they, they're going to ask you, right, to find out.
They asked, yup, at that meeting, they asked if, uh, I could provide, figure out if that building was registered, which we have done, and provide that to David. Uh, they've asked a couple of questions, you guys in condition? I think someone drove through the building, or at least talked to Josh about the building's current condition. Um, but I don't know, ask that, anything about the SLEF's current intentions. Um, but I would just be, if I can get the information. Awesome, good, 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 all right. And seven, what comments?
Um.
Comments?
I just wanna say, I appreciate all the work you guys are doing on the budget, and I just, for you, please, without fear of the town, because we always show up and we always fight for the budget, just please look forward to a budget that's going to provide for our children. Because these guys don't have what they need. And I know you guys will invest again, but we need more, and we're gonna fight, there's gonna be plenty of people standing up fighting. I know there's gonna be a real pushback in the town, there always is, there's always a pushback in the budget today, but we're gonna show up, we're gonna be there, and we're gonna fight for the kids, so just wanna say, please ask for what you need. I know you, there's a lot more you'd like to have, and I wish I could give you everything you need, but, um, just ask for what you can, what, what could sustain us for the walking time, right?
Thank you. Trending?
I regret to add earlier, um, at the conference, I was too, we were discussing the census, that's coming up, and mailing them and start, um, March twelfth, to the individuals. And if they realize that they haven't gone in and completed their census, they're gonna send it out in twenty seconds. Um, a week later, if you haven't completed your census, they're gonna knock on your door. Um, the biggest thing that I took away from that meeting is that the highest population that's not counted is under age six. So the census is providing all kinds of free care for the young to take home with the kids. They'll come to the school board meeting, they'll come to your, so, meeting you have in March. Um, they have to hire thirteen thousand people, just to complete the census. So, I think that information is pretty contact. Like, I don't wanna pay for any, for putting up those, you know, E B Ws, and, um, this is a failed file at the break.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? I think, is anyone else? Okay, with that, the orders need for the non-public session, and we have R S A ninety-one dash eight four three. Roman roll two, A E N G. On the roll, hello, you go.
Yes.
Gene?
Yes. Yes, yes.